Folks, if we could be seated, we're going to get started in a moment.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am delighted to call to order our annual town meeting. Today is Saturday, August 8th, 2020. The time is 8:19. We have a quorum present of 100 voters. Today's tellers have been sworn. They have Paul Basler, Dan Cullavan, and Paul Armstrong. Warrants have been previously declared and properly noticed, but the constables return to service. As tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. Please rise for their pledge of allegiance. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all those who have passed out of town. I'd also like to take a moment of silence for the residents of Kingston to continue to endure and to find the strength to get through these challenging times. Rules for town meeting. Town meeting is run for a town meeting time in our local bylaws. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to one of the microphones. There's one stage right, there's one stage left. Wait to be recognized, state your name and your address. While at the microphone, please keep your face covering on and do not touch the microphone. Please maintain social distancing while approaching the microphone. Please keep comments to under two minutes, and you may approach the microphone a second time, but with only new information. Please keep these new comments to under one minute. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. Motions to amend may be made, but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raises issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interfere with your ability to hear, speak, participate in town meeting, yell out, question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you're trying to speak at the microphone. Please do not move the chairs and take conversations outside. As you can see, I have a mask on. This is uncomfortable for me. All our presenters have masks on. This is to show everyone here that we take safety seriously here in Kingston at town meeting. So please, not for yourself, but for your fellow neighbors, try to keep your mask on at all times. If you can't do that, there's a section in the back of the far right room if you can't wear a mask. I want to thank everyone in Kingston. That section is empty right now. So thank you. I hope to continue to have spirited debate and that this meeting both supports and challenges the issues that are presented. You may make a motion to call the question, but you cannot debate then make the motion. Please be respectful to everyone and remember it's okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand these rules? This is a new location for town meeting. I just want everyone to recognize the exit. They're clearly marked. There's a curtain along this side, but there's further exits on the other side of the building too. The bathrooms, as you come in through the front door, or if they're to the right before you came down to your seat. We're doing a town meeting during a pandemic, and Kingston has a history of having long town meetings. I want the things that need to be debated seriously to be debated seriously. On the smaller issues, if we can move it, let's try to move it. Let's try to keep this meeting going. I love debate. I love a good argument, but let's get to the things that we need to be debated. Ms. Graham, do you have an open emotion?
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Jason R. Talaman, Town Council. Kate Federoff, Town Council. Matthew Darsh, Water Department Superintendent. Robert Monahan, Waste Water Department Superintendent. Jason Silva, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Carol McCoy, Town Accountant. Robert Downey, Town Planner. Thea Stewart, Library Director. Tina Betty, Human Resource Manager. Kevin Donovan, Interim Town Administrator. Gloria Mitchell, Assistant to Town Administrator Board of Selectmen. David F. Young, BMD Smith, PDM Smith. Dr. Jill Prue, Superintendent of Silver Lake Regional School District. Marie Grossman, IT Manager. Christine Healy, Silver Lake Regional School District Business Manager. Michael Banbury, Principal, Kingston Intermediate School. Carrie Whipple, Principal, Kingston Intermediate School.
Have a second. Any debate? Seeing no debate. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see from the supplemental handout, due to the challenging times we are facing in trying to limit the amount of time we're here today, I'm going to present a consent agenda. Now, I've gone through previous meetings and looked at the articles, and these are things that routinely pass at town meeting. That consent agenda is in the additional documentation that you received when you came in. In order to expedite the consideration of routine items, Articles 1, 4, 5, 6, 9, and 16 will be considered for approval in a single vote without debate. I will read each article's number and title. Strike that, and number 10. I will read each article's number and title, and the residents with the question may call a hold. This is similar to how you did the budget last year. So call a hold to inquire of these articles. To the extent that it appears there will be extensive debate on these articles, it will be removed from the consent agenda and deliberated in the normal course. The remaining articles will be moved as printed in the warrant. So Article 1, The Reports. And that was favorable Board of Selectmen 5-0. Article 4, The Water Department Enterprise Budget. Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 5-0. Article 5, Waste Water Department Enterprise Budget. Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance 5-0. Article 6, Elected Officials' Compensation. Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 3-1-1. Article 9, Revolving Fund Authorization. Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 5-0. Article 10, Chapter 90, Roadwork. Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 5-0. Article 16, Community Preservation Budget. 4-1 for the Board of Selectmen and 5-0 for the Finance Committee. So at this time, I'm going to call out the article. Anyone who wants to hold it and debate it will say hold. If it's not held, it will then be moved as at once. So any holds on Article 1? Any holds on Article 4? Any holds on Article 5? Any holds on Article 6? Any holds on Articles 9? Any holds on Article 10? Any holds on Article 16? Being no holds, I move to approve the articles in the consent agenda as printed in the handout. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we're 35% done with town meeting. With that being said, let's move on to Article, uh, Article 2 is not being moved, but we're going to move on to Article 3, the budget. Deb McLean? The, just so everyone's clear, this, this article was, uh, is also amended in the, uh, handouts. You're going to look for the handout that has a Silver Lake budget at $10,994,000. I'm sorry, I had to say that exact, $10,994,995. Thank you. Uh, would everyone accept, that's a friendly amendment, yes.
Okay, Article 3, move that the town appropriate to sum of $37,956,882 to be appropriated, to be expended for the operating budgets for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, as printed in the warrant below. And to meet such appropriation, that the sum of $37,168,902 be raised and appropriated. The sum of $386,166 be transferred from the Water Enterprise Revenue. The sum of $318,863 be transferred from Water, uh, Waste Water Enterprise Revenue. And the sum of $69,251 be transferred from the Septic Betterment Fund Balance. The sum of $13,700 be transferred from the Inspection Revolving Fund.
Having a second, do, anyone like to be, uh, be heard?
Should I read? This one, okay.
I just want to be clear, the, the document that we're, is an annual town meeting additional document, Saturday, August 8th, 2020. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Deborah McLean. I'm the new Chair of the FinCom Department Committee. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'm pleased to present a balanced budget for fiscal '21 with your, for your consideration here today. This budget preserves our reserves and allows for favorable tax, uh, excess last, excess tax levy capacity, providing the much, much needed, um, financial flexibility that would be necessary for the coming years. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to thank all of the department, boards, committees, and administration for their contributions and cooperations to bring this budget to you today. So if you go to the, um, additional documents, that's where you see the updated numbers. It doesn't have a page number, but it's right behind where it says Article 3. You will see that we have a $49.3 million general operating budget that represents a 1.1% decrease in expenditures over last year. This budget is very different than the one we planned to bring to this in the spring as it reflects the unique circumstances we accounted with COVID pandemic and the need to reduce revenue estimates, tailback town services, and establish a path to change behaviors given the recession we find ourselves in. While none of these reductions were desirable, and they were not taken lightly, we do believe they represent the most palatable options given the circumstances. As many of you may know, the state released a joint resolution between the House and the Senate providing assurance that state aid, specifically Chapter 7, 70, and the unrestricted general government aid would be level funded at fiscal '21 level. This restores approximately $800,000 of funding for the operating budget at a time when we had been considering alternate, um, using alternate sources, including reserves, and significantly reducing our excess tax levy capacity to fund the fiscal '21 budget. While this comes as welcome news, until the Appropriation Act is passed and signed into law, with the acceptance of the state budget in the fall, we need to be cautious about what we restore to the '21 budget and at the same time, be extremely mindful of what the financial difficulties '22 and '23 may present. In terms of our financial resources, as of June 30th, 2020, our two stabilization funds had a balance of $3.4 million combined. This budget does not utilize any of those reserves and protects our financial flexibility for the coming years. Following this town meeting, if all articles are approved, we will have a free cash balance of approximately $1 million. In your warrant book, you will see that Article 3 is requesting two separate votes. One for the town budget without the Silver Lake assessment and one for the Silver Lake assessment. For background, Kingston is one of three member towns in the Silver Lake Regional School District, which also includes Plimpton and Halford. Silver Lake operates under an autonomous budget, with each member of town assessed their portion of the yearly operating budget based on enrollment. Prior to the COVID pandemic, Silver Lake Committee had approved the fiscal '21 budget that was supported with pre-pandemic revenue projections. In discussion with the Silver Lake School Committee over the past several months, Kingston has expressed the need for an overall budget reduction to reflect the current economic uncertainty. However, today, we are presented with a pre-COVID budget that represents a 4.3% increase from fiscal '21. Due to this development, we are presenting the budget in two parts for the town's consideration. We ask that you consider our recommendations carefully as you vote for the '21 budget before you today. Thank you.
Previous budget done by, uh, in it last year. I'm going to call out each of the, um, line items before you. So if, if there's a hold when I call it, say hold. If there's not, then we'll move on to the next one. So first one, general government. Second one, public safety. Education. Public works. Human services. Culture and recreation. Debt services. Employee benefits. Non-town net metering. Insurance. For the record's clear, I have a hold on education and non-town net metering. Were there any other holds? Just, uh, Town Council wanted me to be clear that, um, the education doesn't involve Silver Lake, which will be taken up separately next. To that extent, I'll open up debate to, uh, education and non-town net metering.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. John Michael Font, 16 May Avenue.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
I, I got, go ahead, one more time.
I can't hear you say.
Say your name again.
John Michael Font, 16 May Avenue.
Thank you. Can you put your mask back on, please? What's your motion?
I'd like to motion for that line item to read instead of, uh, the 14 million that's there. $12,240,000, which is a 15% decrease.
Sir, as I said in the rules, we're going to need that motion in writing.
Okay, I have it in writing.
Is there a second on that motion?
Should I bring it up to you?
Please do, thank you. Ask if it can confirm. Can I confirm the, uh, second of the motion that Dan? Thank you. Having a second, I'll hear you.
May I speak to the motion? Okay. Uh, so yeah, basically, I'd encourage folks to support this motion to reduce the, uh, budget, budget as it's proposed for education. Um, just a little bit of quick background here. I've lived in this town my entire life. I have two small school-aged children, one, uh, four years old, one six years old. They will both be homeschooling this year with me due to a number of circumstances that I'm sure everybody is aware of. Um, I understand that many folks are in this situation. Uh, lots of parents in town are having to either miss work or completely lose their jobs so they can be home with their children due to the circumstances. Um, people may be wondering why I chose a 15% reduction. It's actually rather simple. If you look at the statistics right now, due to the coronavirus pandemic, uh, Massachusetts is actually leading the nation in unemployment. You're number one out of all the states with the highest unemployment rate. Uh, prior to the pandemic, our unemployment was around 2%. It's now 17. So it's a, there's a 15% increase in unemployment in the state. As we all know, uh, the main source of financial support to the town government and to education are the taxpayers. So it stands to reason that if the taxpayers have decreased their income by at least 15%, because as I see it, uh, a 15% increase in unemployment does not actually factor in folks that are still employed but are earning less. So the decreases to, uh, citizens' income could actually be even more. That also does not include decreases to, um, businesses' income as well. So obviously, we're in the middle of a dire situation here. Uh, many, many parents are having to, as I said, miss work and also, uh, have expenditures with homeschool materials, time, all sorts of other expenses. So I think it's only fair to reason that, um, we should expect lower enrollment in the schools. Parents having less money and having to come up with their own solutions. Um, it doesn't seem reasonable to be paying essentially the same amount that we've paid in the past. I know it's not exactly pretty close. So that's why I would encourage you all to support this motion to decrease, uh, what's proposed by 15%. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on the motion to amend? See you, nun. Call a vote. All in favor of the amendment to change the number, say aye. So that's to reduce the, the number in the amendment. Everyone understands that, right? All those opposed? I'm going to call that as a majority voice to no. The amendment fails. There was another hold for non-town meeting, uh, non-town net metering.
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane.
Good morning, Mr. Harlow.
I was actually looking to make a motion to remove the non-town net meeting, I have it written down, um, from the budget.
You've come prepared. Thank you. Please, Deb. You gotta get closer to the microphone.
I have this every year. Um, motion to remove the non-town net metering from the budget and to propose an underwrite as the windmill pertaining to this non-town net metering is not functioning. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna reread his motion. So it's.
We're gonna, we're gonna read it, and then if you go back to the microphone, um, you can make that statement.
Okay, so, so the revised motion was motion to remove the non-town net metering.
Uh, yeah, so my understanding, I thought that, that this non-town net meeting, uh, referenced the KWI. Um, but apparently it doesn't. Okay, so misunderstanding.
Just to be clear, you're withdrawing your motion?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You're withdrawing your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still do have a question though on the non-town net metering.
Go ahead.
Um, so is there still KWI non-town net metering that's in the budget that, um, essentially allowed for excess levy capacity to be utilized and therefore taxes to be increased on the residents?
Mary? Please. The podium, please.
Morning, everybody. So Dan, the, um, item that's in the budget for non-town net metering references the three turbines that are on the O'Donnell property. Um, if that, there is no reference in the. That, there is no reference in the operating budget, KWI enterprise. That is a separate enterprise fund and taken up in a separate article under the town meeting warrant. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sir, Dan, Mr. Harlow, if you can just come follow the arrows. I'm going to have a yellow brick road made, but they wouldn't let me. Thank you, thank you. Good morning. Could you state your name and your address for us, please? And please, just so the microphone can hand you, can you just step into the green box? Thank you.
Hi, Suzanne Haggerty, 15 School Street. Um, I had a point of order on the Culture and Recreation line item of budget that could ask a question on a line item. Is that acceptable?
Go ahead.
With the 26% reduction in the, um, in the budget for the library, will that impact the services they're able to provide? Can someone speak to that?
I didn't quite hear you.
Huh? Oh, there's a 26% cut in the budget library?
Which, which, which item are you referring to?
Uh, line 610. Line M610. Library, yeah, under the Culture and Recreation.
There was no hold on that item?
Okay. Can I put a hold on that?
But we can answer your question.
Can I put a hold on that? Or is that possible?
Sure.
Thank you.
What is your question on that?
Well, I'm concerned about the reduction in, in services for the library, you know, reducing the library budget that much.
Is Sia here? Would you like to come up and address that, please?
Stuart, Library Director. Yes, I can tell you what the impact is on library services. The immediate impact is that with four fewer staff members, we will be reducing hours probably about 16 hours a week. It's a little early to say, but fewer programs and fewer hours than residents are accustomed. This budget also puts Kingston on track, whose library certification ran about February. Losing library certification has three primary consequences. The first is that Kingston would lose eligibility to apply for federal grants such as a $10,000 grant that we are, that we were just awarded for services to preschool children and families. The second consequence is loss of about $19,000 in state aid to public libraries, which is funding that we rely on for programs primarily. The most serious consequence is, that in my view, the most serious consequence is that Kingston residents would lose their right to borrow books and other library materials from other Massachusetts libraries. So in simple terms, that means that if your child needs a book for homework and Kingston doesn't have it, or it's not on our shelf, we won't be able to get it for Kingston, for you, if we lose certification. And you also won't be able to go to another library to borrow that material. So that, to me, is the most direct impact on Kingston residents. The good news is that there is an opportunity to restore funding, to keep library certification at, if funds are restored at a special... But those are, in simple terms, what the impact would be on library services for Kingston.
This way, the clerk would like to see. My mic won't stay on. Thank you. Testing. Okay. Any further debate? Yes. Just go, you gotta go up and around. Sorry. We're across.
Lindsey Wilson, 29 Taltimbers Lane. I was just wondering, what is the difference between the budget number and how much it would take to retain certification? Is it the entire amount of the reduction? Or is it, you know, there's some reduction where we could avoid decertification?
Can you just stay there for one sec to make sure? I didn't, I want to, can you repeat your question? I didn't quite hear you.
Just following up on what Sia said, I'm wondering what's the number we have to hit to retain certification?
Thank you.
Now, the library budget, about $165,000 below the number needed for automatic renewal of certification, there is probably a number lower than that that would allow us... We would have to work out with the finance.
Oh, any no further debate? And I'm going to move for a vote. We have a Board of Selectmen favorable 5-0, Finance Committee favorable 5-0. This is a majority of vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? Seeing minimal opposition, motion carries. Moving on to Silver Lake.
$2 million. Move that the town appropriate the sum of $10,994,995 appropriated to be expended for the Silver Lake school assessment, loses of Silver Lake debt, operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st to 2020, as printed in the warrants below. And to meet such appropriation, the sum of $10,994,995 be raised and appropriated.
Have in a second. Does anyone want to be heard? Yes, Mr. Harlow.
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. I may have a motion, but I wanted to ask a question first. And that question is, is the reason for separating out the Silver Lake budget, was that because, I know there's been a lot of budgetary changes and whatnot, so is it my understanding that Silver Lake has essentially added in, or added back in $300,000 that had been removed and that removal of that approximate $300,000 was as a result of what's going on with coronavirus and not knowing about funding? Is that fair to say? I cannot, I don't think it is, hon.
So at this point, the town, the school budget is a budget they presented to us and actually asked the towns to vote no to, so they could get some time to figure out what's going on. So that is the latest that, we have heard that this is the budget they'd like to vote no on.
Eric Crone, 43, Longwood Circle. I'm the vice chair of the Silver Lake School Committee. Originally, I think when we first voted that budget, well, going back, we voted a budget in March, which is the number that we're presenting today. The town asked all departments to make cuts anticipating between 15 and 20% cuts to our Chapter 70 and UGGA state aid to towns and municipalities. We went through, we made the cuts. We felt like the cuts were not going to be good. We needed more time in June, so we actually reverted, went back to our March budget instead of making all those cuts, and we sent it out. And at the time, we were saying in our meeting that we wanted folks to vote no. After that, Plimpton voted our budget affirmative. They voted the assessment to Plimpton. And also since then, we've, we've learned that the state is level funding our Chapter 70 and the general government aid to towns. So it, we, we need our budget. We are asking for this budget because we have a number of additional costs associated with our reopening. And if, if folks don't already know, we voted to vote, to reopen in a hybrid model. So some children will be learning from home, some will be in school part-time, two days a week, home three days a week. So we have a lot of costs. We have a lot of technology that we have to purchase because the kids who are remote learning need to have working devices at home. We have a lot of technology and PPE that, that folks need in the schools. So that 15 to 20% cuts that we thought were going to happen to the towns did not happen, and we are fully funded. So we definitely need that money. We now have our reopening model. We have a lot of work to do over the next coming weeks. We have to work on memorandums of agreement with our unions to reopen. We still have a contract to settle with our teachers at Silver Lake. There's just a lot of work to do, and we need some certainty. We need, we need some stability. We need a budget to move forward. So if, if Kingston votes our budget today, Silver Lake has a budget because Plimpton has already voted it. Halifax will vote at the end of this month. If we vote this budget down today, Halifax can vote the budget at the end of August, and then Kingston is on the hook for, for that money anyways. So what we're asking is for the budget to be passed so that we will have some stability and we can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This way.
Should I wait for any other questions?
Come right up here if there's another one.
Nobody can skip like me. I'd like to make a motion on, on that, having, having heard that response.
You're asking to amend? Mr. Harlow, just to clarify, at the beginning, I said there's additional number in the handout that the actual budget amount was $10,994,995. There a second? Have in a second, I'll hear you. Thank you.
Not on. No.
Hello? Okay. Let's read the moderator. I was wondering if I could ask Mr. Crone a question. The $10,994, is that the number that you had pre the request, prior to the request to, for a 15% reduction in anticipation of cuts in state aid?
Please.
Christine or Jill, raise your hand if I'm incorrect, but the $10,994 is what we had originally voted for in March, prior to the request to cut that budget. We were, we were asked to cut $300,000 from the Silver Lake budget. We went through that process, but remember, we're a regional district, so that means that Plimpton, Halifax, and Kingston pay in together. So for Kingston to cut 300,000, that means we need cuts from Plimpton and Halifax, but we're cutting teachers. So when you cut teachers, we also have unemployment. So it turned into, and I can't remember the exact number, a $300,000 cut out of our assessment turns into about $700,000 out of the Silver Lake budget. We've already laid off quite a few teachers. We need to get them hired back. They're, right now, they're laid off. So we need a budget so that that doesn't happen. Also, the 4.3% increase is not to the Silver Lake budget. The Silver Lake budget had an increase of 2.72%. The 4.3 to the assessment to Kingston is due to the increased enrollment of the number of students we send to Silver Lake, as well as an increase to the minimum contribution. So that the state looks at how wealthy the town is, how much they can afford to pay, and of course, they tell us that we can afford to pay more. So we had to pay more, we had more students, and then we had the 2.72% increase, which resulted in the 4.3.
So the, the, a lot of the rationale of the, the decrease is behind the notion of we are in the middle of something that's, again, I hate to, I really do hate to use the term unprecedented, so scratch that actually from the record. It's just something that we really haven't seen before. I mean, you have GDP that's dropping. I know the state's saying that they're going to level fund us, but it does get into, the state's also promised that they're going to fully fund, not fully, but circuit breaker funding, and they, they haven't done that, right? So it gets into, here we go with spending money that the state's promising they're going to give us, and the state doesn't even know where it's going to get the money. And then we're going to be on the hook for it, just like we are with the other things that they promised that they were going to fund for the schools that they aren't funding. And so you have to, in a lot of respects, look to the future, not to what we personally want right now, but what is in the best... want right now, but what is in the best interest of the town. And I really do think that doing such and making the cuts now and erring on the side of caution is a lot smarter decision to do for the immediate future than to plan on the state who doesn't know where they're going to get the money. I mean, I think the state's quite honestly, based on everything I've read, and they're going to be banking on the feds trying to give them money. We don't know if that's going to happen or not. I do think that will be a smart choice to make that $300,000 cut. I understand that it will create some pain, some discomfort, some uneasiness with a lot of people who have students in the school or who are teachers. I totally understand that. Budget cuts have been had to be made across the board. I'm sure a lot of people have had to make cuts in their own personal budgets since this whole thing started. We need to keep that going for the time being. I also think that it's not truly fair, you know, we talk about fair quite often in this town, and I believe the elementary school, they made cuts. And so it's not really appropriate that we ask and request that the elementary schools make the cuts, but then the Silver Lake doesn't. So if we're going to be doing things in the interest of the town and the well-being of the town, then everybody has to come together as a town and make these tough decisions in the benefit, for the benefit of the town, just like the elementary school did.
16 May Avenue, John Michael Fauntz. I would like to speak in support of this motion as well. I appreciate the school committee chairman's position in terms of wanting to advocate for the children and education and all that, and I understand, as he said, that, you know, they need their budget. And I just want to encourage the voters here today to remember that there are many sides to many different issues, and we all have needs, we all have challenges, especially during these times that we're facing. And again, I just want to reiterate to folks that the way that we fund the government, the way that we fund the state government, the way that we fund local government is through the taxpayers and through businesses. And I can't help but sit here and think to myself, wondering if the irony is lost on some of us here, as we hear about increases to the library budget and things of that nature, that we are holding town meeting inside of a failed business, which once supported, in one way or another, through tax money, our town. What we're seeing right here, a closed-down business, is far too common right now. And as Mr. Harlow stated, where is the state getting the money from? I read an article that said the state was $900 million with a budget deficit. The first thought that came to my mind was, my goodness, coronavirus decimated Massachusetts, and then I noticed that the date on the article was from January. That was before all of this. Where is the state getting the money? I understand it. I have school-aged children. I want what's best for my kids and for other people's kids. But at the end of the day, where is the money coming from? What can we afford? I would encourage folks to support this $300,000 cut because it's all we can do at this point.
Thank you.
Michael Cowat, 163 Summer Street. I have a question that I'm hoping I could get some clarification on for myself and for the other members of town meeting who are here. My understanding is that the Silver Lake assessment does not work in quite the same way as the other parts of the budget, and that to amend it on town meeting floor, as has been proposed, is tantamount to rejecting it entirely and going back and asking that the Silver Lake School Committee reopen its budget process if we even get to that point pending the vote of the Halifax Town Meeting.
I'm going to let town council give an answer to that.
So if you reduce, it's considered a disapproval under the law. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So it is considered a disapproval under the law. Now, you've got a three-town district, so it also depends upon what Halifax does. As the gentleman before said, that if Halifax approves, then you've got a two-thirds vote, so the appropriation would go through. Now, the critical piece is if Halifax disapproves or similarly reduces, which constitutes a disapproval, then it goes back to the school committee for reconsideration, and they can decide whether to give you a lower number, a higher number, or the same number. And then you would have to come back and reevaluate.
Okay. In light of that information, I think that as much sympathy as I have for the comments of the folks who spoke before me and my shared concerns about where this money is coming from, I think putting the Silver Lake schools in the position of being in limbo at this point in this year would not be the most responsible course of action, and I would urge the other folks here to vote against this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Cahill-McStowe. I'm at 34 Brook Street, and I am a teacher at Silver Lake Regional High School. I also have three children in the district, two who are extremely high needs and would be considered Cohort D. So I am speaking from the perspective of not only a teacher, but also a parent. I wanted to speak a little bit about the rationale for the decrease. It was considered, I think Mr. Harlow indicated that it was because of fear of COVID and the lack of funding. I just wanted to clarify that, and Mr. Crone, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the rationale was that our school committee was trying to be proactive in these very challenging times, and we're concerned that the Chapter 70 funding would not come in at full level. And so what they did is they made a proposal then, back in March, and then later in June, to make sure that the school had the time to make very informed decisions if those cuts had to be made. Chapter 70 funding, just to reiterate, came in at level funds. So we received the full Chapter 70 funding. No? It's been promised, yes. So as far as the state indicates, though, we have been told that that is something that we can count on, and that is why we are pushing for the full level services. In this time, where it became apparent to me that the parents in this community really wanted to make sure that they could have the choice, and that is why our school committee decided to go hybrid. With that said, if we are going to give our parents and our students the best choices that they can have about how to pursue their education come this fall, which is creeping up on us very quickly, it is important that we give the support to the school district to make sure that we can do the most with what we have. I know there are a lot of fears about the remote learning. That was back in the spring. That was a crisis model. It was like building the plane mid-flight. There are lots of efforts on the Silver Lake teachers' behalf that are trying to make sure that we are ready for just about anything, whatever model that this district needs us to do, and we want to make sure that we are fully supported. It is so important that we provide some level of certainty to our students and to the community in this area, and I think it is very important that we vote this budget through so that your teachers and your school committee and your administration in this district can move forward to start making an actual feasible model that can work for your students. We ask for your vote, please, to push this assessment through.
Mr. Harlow, is this with new information?
Yeah, it's actually with regards to a condo.
Thank you.
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. So I don't think that, considering that the budget was at approximately the $10,600,000 up until a week and a half ago, I don't really think it's putting Silver Lake in a position that they weren't already prepared to be put in. They were, we didn't find out from the state until about, I think it was a week and a half ago, that they were going to level fund it. So to make the argument that taking out the $300,000 would essentially put the school in a situation that they're not prepared for, I don't think is a fully accurate statement because it was something that the schools had been prepared to do for quite some time. And like I said, it wasn't until this most recent change where the state has supposedly made that promise. The other aspect to it, too, is that, from my understanding, the cuts were requested straight up that the school cut $300,000 and that the elementary school system also cut $300,000. The rationale doesn't have to do with fear of COVID or anything like that. The rationale has to do with the money. Follow the money. Where is it coming from? You look at, again, GDP, it's dropped significantly. These are all things that while I want the best, for sure, again, I want the best for the town. I know a lot of people think that I'm just up here to say no, 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 but that's not the case. I really want this town to remain in a positive light, but I don't think we can do that by spending our way into essentially prosperity. I think it's doing just the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow.
Eric Crone, 43, Longwood Circle, vice chair of the Silver Lake School Committee. So just to clarify, back in June, we were asked by the town to make cuts of $300,000. Again, our town was anticipating cuts to state aid of 15% to 20%. Believe me, we did not want to make those cuts. We went through, we made the cuts. Kingston made the cuts. They weren't as bad as Silver Lake. We were able to cut $300,000 because we had some savings and some line items. So we didn't have to lay off teachers. Silver Lake was devastating. It cut what education at Silver Lake was going to look like. We made that vote. We cut that money out. I can't remember the exact amount, but it was around $700,000. Within a couple of days, everyone was feeling remorse. We went back, we voted to reconsider, and we went back to our March vote because we did not agree with the $700,000 cuts. We also didn't agree that our town was asking us to do this. Other towns were not anticipating 15% to 20% cuts in state aid. Some were anticipating 5%, some were anticipating level funding, some were as deep as, I think, 25%. So they were all over the board. The state was a mess, the towns were a mess. So we went back to our March numbers because we don't believe in making those cuts. Remember, back in the financial crisis, back in '08, '09, the federal government stepped up. The state stepped up. They level funded Chapter 70 then. So education is incredibly important in Kingston. It's incredibly important in Massachusetts. We're one of the top school systems in the country. Education is incredibly important to the federal government. It's an election year. Who's going to cut education? Who's going to let education fall apart? So the federal government is committed to it. Governor Baker's committed to it. Our State House is committed to it. Your school committee here is committed to education here in Kingston and for Silver Lake. We just need that budget.
Thank you.
Again, it's a 2.72% increase over last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having a second? Having a second? All those in favor of moving the question? And this is on the motion, just to clarify, this is on the motion to amend only. All those opposed? Opposed to move? Yeah. Sorry, sorry. This is on the amendment. All those in favor of moving the amendment, say aye. My mistake, I apologize. This is on to move the question. All those in favor say aye. To call the question on the amendment. The amendment is to decrease the budget by $300,000. Hold on. Can I have a second?
So right now, there was a motion to call the question. It was seconded, and it's to call the question so that we can move on the amendment, but the first piece is to take a vote on calling the question "Close Debate on Moving to Amend." So does everyone understand at this point, we just decide whether or not we're closing debate on the motion to amend? Okay, and so a favorable vote will be to close debate, and a negative vote would mean to continue debating the motion to amend. Got it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Then the next piece is to, on the motion to amend.
Correct.
So if you vote in favor of the motion to amend, you're reducing the budget.
Sorry for the confusion. So now, we're going to take a vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of amending the school budget, say aye. All those opposed to amendment? Motion does not carry. Any further debate on the main motion? Seeing no debate? I will move for a vote. We have Board of Selectmen favorable 5-0, Finance Committee 0 to 5. All those in favor of the budget, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I'm going to count this. We have our counters. Please take out your cards. Hold on. Mr. Armstrong, did you get? Mr. Colvin, can you count the Finance Committee, too? The nose allowed. We have a budget. I apologize for the growing pains up here. I'll get there.
Can I be here? Okay. We'll do it this way. Lorraine Bergio, Chairman of the Wage and Personnel Committee. And I moved that the town amend the wage and personnel bylaw, including the classification and compensation schedules A, B, and C, and other textual changes contained therein, as printed in the informational handout. Do I have any questions on these?
You going to present it? You going to present it? Present it as you wish.
Thanks for your patience. The first item we're talking about is directly in Section 9. And we're adding new positions, changing positions, reclassifying exempt positions. And we're shifting some positions from non-union to union. Changing designations on some positions from full-time only to allow for part-time filling. And that's about it on the first section. In the Item B, it's for Schedule C1. And again, we're requesting that the minimum wage be raised to mirror the state, from 12 to 1275 an hour. And on Schedule C3, it is the same for some positions. Also, we've added the position of Program Intervention Facilitator. And that goes into the section as well. That's a recreation department position. In Section C Classification, we're doing a housekeeping edit. And we're removing this section because there's no mention of step increases in 70. So it is definitely all a housekeeping order. Section 8, we're talking about expanding the time for the town to provide the Wage and Personnel Board with proposals, supporting documentation, in a timely manner that will allow our board to analyze, review, bring people in that we need to talk to about what they're requesting. So again, that's, it's a non-monetary issue, it's for deliberations. In Section 16, we've changed the tuition reimbursement process. We're requesting that they establish a cap on the amount of money available to any employee annually, which would be 2,000. Currently, there's no cap on the amount that they can request. We're also raising the eligible grade from C to B for reimbursement. So essentially, what we're doing is we're raising the bar. So if you want reimbursement from the town, your grade has to be excellent. In Section 7, we are moving, or we're proposing, to move all employees to a July 1st step award date. Right now, there are probably a half a dozen or so employees who are not on this system. And we looked at moving everybody in bulk versus an attrition type of a method. And we felt that the moving gradually through attrition was a better way to do it, especially since the cost to move everybody at once would be $28,000 for a housekeeping issue. But it's more than that. It will save the town to get everybody on the same cycle. Now, in Section 7 Compensation, the, this is the comprehensive one. We're recommending a temporary suspension of step rates for fiscal year 2021. We also have not recommended a COLA. COLA, Cost of Living Adjustments, are not automatic in the bylaw. They have to be voted every year. We are not recommending a cost of living, and we are requesting that there be a temporary suspension. Altogether, that would save about $103,270 for fiscal '21. Now, there is a memorandum of understanding between the Kingston Town Employees Union and the town. We took into consideration that memorandum and added the following paragraph. "To the extent that further negotiations between the Kingston Town Employees Union (KTEU) and the town triggers a modification of the Cost of Living Adjustment (COLA) and our step increases as authorized in the Memorandum of Understanding (MOU) dated 6/29/2020 between KTEU and the town, the Wage and Personnel Board shall revisit Section 7 Compensation at the next town meeting." What that says is KTEU has agreed to a suspension. Wage and Personnel is recommending a suspension of the step increases. This is dependent on, again, the state aid. If the state aid is reduced by 15% or more, no change will be made. If the state aid is less than that, then that will trigger, in KTEU's case, a evaluation. They'll go back to the table. In Wage and Personnel's case, we will come back with a proposal at the next town meeting to address that issue. So basically, yeah, we're asking for a freeze, but conditional, somewhat. The last one is a stipend issue. And it is, it would allow the town to pay $3,000 a year to an employee under very specific circumstances who does procurement work. In the handout, it explains pretty thoroughly what the requirements would be to receive that $3,000 annually. And it only addresses the issue for an employee who accepted employment with the town, and there were no procurement responsibilities in their job, and they are none in the job description. And they have stepped up. There's only a couple of people that would be eligible anyway. But the procurement responsibilities in Massachusetts are tremendous. The process you have to go through, the procedures you have to follow are quite thorough. And they're a lot. They're a lot of work. I myself have been in the beginning of it when I was working with another place. So those are all of our recommendations, and I hope you approve all of them. Do we have any questions?
Do you have a second? Actually, I believe the Board of Selectmen is going to, it's not voted by the Board of Selectmen. I believe they're going to take a second to vote this, and then we'll open it up to debate. If you can just be patient, one second. They're just going to vote. They didn't vote on this. Okay, so just give them one second. I'm going to read the vote. I'm going to read the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Wage.
No, no, no.
Before we open it up for debate, I'm just going to read off the votes. The Board of Selectmen recommended favorably in part. The Finance Committee is 1-4. The Wage and Personnel is 2-1. I'll open this up for debate if anyone wants to be heard.
Kevin Walsh, 56 Indian Pond Road. I see about $200,000 in highlighted savings, but no highlighted costs in here. And the Finance Committee seems to be against it. Is there somebody from the Finance Committee who could address what they're against?
I'll refer to Deb McLean who passed the vote, and she can also explain FinCom's position.
Hi, I'm a member of the Finance Committee and also of Wage and Personnel. I voted no for both of these votes that I was in because of one part that includes a stipend. I'm against it for many reasons, but the main one is that right now, we're financially stressed, people getting laid off. I don't think it's an appropriate time to be giving some employees additional funding for doing a job that is actually in somebody else's job title.
I just wanted to explain the Board of Selectmen's vote to recommend it in part, but not in its entirety. There's a lot wrapped up into this motion. And there's a very important piece of it, which is that the Wage and Personnel Committee agreed to a wage freeze, dependent on what happens with the unions. But our budget is based on that wage freeze. So, for lack of a better way to say it, we don't want to throw away the baby with the bathwater. There's pieces of this that we, as a board, are not comfortable with either, including making, creating positions that aren't funded, and the stipend issue that was spoken to by Deb earlier. But again, we don't, we budgeted for a freeze to Wage and Personnel in steps and in zero increase for cost of living. So that's wrapped up into this. So a no vote on this article would mean that that wage freeze doesn't happen.
I just want to explain one thing for clarification. If we were to vote this whole thing down as it is today and said no to it, that would mean that step raises and COLAs would be given to all employees, which would go into the tax levy, which would in fact impact everybody, and that would really mess a lot of things up. So we can take these piecemeals, we can pull out parts that we don't like and vote separately, which might be the better way to do this. Okay, at this point, we're going to move to divide into two questions. It'll separate the stipend out from the other portion. We'll vote on it in two different ways if that's what we all decide.
Would anyone like to be heard on the divide? So to be clear, we're dividing Section 16. Full-time employees may receive procurement. Seeing no debate on the motion to divide, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with little... So now, we have two questions. We're going to take the main question first. In Article 7. We're going to move Article 7. Just on the COLAs and the and the steps. All those in favor of that, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Now going to the second part of the motion, the $3,000 procurements. Seeing no debate? All those in favor, say aye. All those... Hold on, I got a clarification. We're voting on, in Section 16, full-time employees may receive a procurement of $3,000 each fiscal year. We're voting on just that. So again... There was no discussion. I've already moved the question, sir. Sorry. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion fails. Thank you. Moving on to number eight, capital planning, Brad Randall. Yep. Folks, I thought we moved everything except the last piece. There's a question as to if that's an accurate reflection. Ma'am, did you have a point of order?
I did, yes.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification on the...
Can I ask your name?
Susan Woodworth, 136 Grove Street. Just a clarification on the vote. I didn't know if we took Section 7 and just did the COLA and the wage freezes and then the $3,000. Did we actually vote on the other part of the article, which included all, everything else that wasn't specified?
Except which was divided, which was number, which the $3,000. Everything was moved as one. I divided the $3,000 stipend. That failed. The entire rest of it carried.
Okay, the way that it was written was that we were only voting on the COLA and the wage freezes and the first portion?
We voted on the entire article except the $3,000.
There were other parts of the article outside of just steps and the COLA. There were other parts of the article that included job descriptions and changes. Was that voted on with the step and the COLA piece of it?
Those all carried.
Okay, thank you.
I voted everything. Thank you. Mr. Randall.
Okay, can you hear me now? So, for Article 8, I'm gonna ask that people follow along with the additional documents for town meeting, as some of the numbers have changed. They're lower. Just two changes in Project 8 and 10 for the library. So, I move that the sum of $474,116 be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $414,920 be transferred from free cash, $30,000 be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, and $29,196 be transferred from funds left over from Article 40, annual town meeting in May 2018. Account number 0161072546. Set expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named below. And you want me to... You want me to read every project separately?
Well, my thought on this one is to do the same thing as the holds. So, if you want to just read each one, or I can just call it as a hold. But why don't you just go through them quickly?
Okay, so I will read each project, and as the moderators explained to me, we'll have a hold process. Project 1, $35,000 to pay for the third full year of a five-year lease that purchased a Volvo front-end loader for streets, trees, and parks. Project 2, $19,500 to pay for the second year of a five-year lease that purchased tobacco for streets, trees, and parks. Project 3, $25,000 to pay for the second full year of a three-year lease for the purchase of a Ford F-150 Fire Command vehicle for the fire department. Project 4, $122,000 to purchase two Ford SUV patrol cars for the police department.
I'm gonna call the holds at the end. I'm just gonna call a hold.
Project 5, $130,000 to purchase two 85 cubic yard ejection trailers for the transfer station for the solid waste department. Project 6, $17,500 to purchase two recycling cans for the transfer station for the solid waste department. Project 7, $17,124 to purchase a replacement of town-wide server for the IT department. Project 8, $11,296 to purchase replacement computers and software at the library for the IT department. Project 9, $37,000 to remove poles and light system at Lutz Field, remove and replace at basketball court for the recreation department. Project 10, $29,196 for interior building, entrance, walkway, et cetera, improvements for the library department. Project 11, $30,000 to replace/repair the docks, floats, and gangways for the harbor master.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna call out each project. I believe I was hearing holds, but just so the record's clear, if you have a hold as I call out the project, you just yell out hold. So, Project 1. Project 2. Project 3. Project 4, I heard a hold. No, Project 4, is there a hold? I got a hold on 4. Project 5. Project 6. Project 7. Project 8. Is there a hold on 8? Is there a hold on 9? Is there a hold on 10? Is there a hold on 11? So, the individual has the, or whoever has the holds on 4, 8, 9, and 10, I open those up for debate. No. Again, I'll repeat, I have a hold on 4, 8, 9, 10. Is there any other holds? I don't hear any. For the hold on 4... Yes, sir.
John Michael Faunt, 16 Main Avenue. I would like to get some clarification. Is there any, I understand this is for two cruisers. Is there any possibility that the police department could somehow make some ends meet and do, and get by with just one cruiser for the time being?
Is the police chief here?
However, if Chief Splain is here, I would like him to address that.
Chief, would you like to address that? Glad you can come up.
In order to expedite debate, I'll accept Mr. Faunt's, I guess, motion for one car. Usually, we replace two cars each year. The process usually starts about now for the next fiscal year. Usually, when you start the process, you're trying to guess what's gonna happen with the cruisers for the next, you know, 15 to 18 months in advance. The car that I really need to replace is a 2014 Mark SUV. Recently, while I was on routine patrol, the wheel fell off. We're trying to, you know, maintain a fleet that can respond to calls. The other car that I wanted to replace was a 2012 car that's used for administrative services. I'll try to put that one off the year.
Mr. Faunt? You have a motion?
You have the motion in light of what was just said. I'd move to amend Project 4 to read $61,000 to purchase one Ford SUV patrol car.
Do we have any debate on the amendment? Sir, would you like to be heard on the amendment?
Uh, not necessarily. My name's Jim Conley. I'm 243 Main Street. I'm interested mostly in learning from the Finance Committee why they voted unfavorably around this project.
Thank you. Sir, what was your name again?
Jim Conley.
Thank you.
Are you asking specifically about the police cruisers or...?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We have a second.
Okay, first specifically for the two, the purchase of the two police cruisers. We did have a split vote. Two of us were for it and three were against it. Myself, I was for it. I do believe that we need to stick to the schedule of getting two cars a year. It's tough in this financial cycle, but if we get behind, it's a hard catch-up game. If any other members would like to vote, to explain why they voted against it...
I'm Jim Sewell, the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. For the reasons that John explained, we, I thought it was more prudent to buy one cruiser this year and hold off if possible, given the pandemic, given the uncertainty in state budget and so forth. That was the reason why I voted against it.
Seeing no further debate on the motion to amend. All those in favor of the amendment say aye. All those opposed to the amendment say no. The ayes have it. All right, we had, so, motion's allowed. 61. We have another hold for number 8. You should probably sit closer.
John Michael Faunt, 16 Main Avenue. I actually just wanted to hear from the Finance Committee, being that there were four against and only one in favor, so I wanted to see if we could get them, just some input in that regard. Number 8.
Can I just interrupt for one second? Is that your, did you have the holds for 9 and 10? Do you, is that your same question? So, I can maybe have them address all three?
Yeah. Number 9, I actually wanted to speak to as well, but it's the same premise.
Did you want to hear the rationale is my question?
Sorry?
Did you want to hear their rationale in their vote?
Yeah, it's the same premise for all three of them. Thank you.
Do you want to address the committees on 8, 9, and 10?
Yeah, okay. So, for 8 and 9, but 10 was not with 8 and 9. Yes, absolutely right. So, for 8, 9, and 10, we took those votes when the Capital Plan Committee had actually voted against those three projects. And so, that is one of the reflections of, we like to follow the Capital Planning Board lead on that. And then within that, some of us had our own ideas. They then took a vote after our votes to support this. But this reflects our votes when their votes were against these three articles.
The Capital Planning Committee are still showing as against. Only, they only changed on number 9.
So, if you'd have to go into your additional documentation...
There's updated voting.
Our new votes are reflected there. Can I address that briefly? So, the reason, when the pandemic was happening, I believe the votes were taken in April. We voted against the library projects because we were worried about, you know, just saving money and making sure that we were only voting for projects that were priorities. When they came back to us with A, a reduced figure, and B, some time had passed and we got the input of the treasurer, that he felt comfortable with us appropriating money to these projects. The committee was convinced that with the reopening of the library, that this was an appropriate time to invest in the equipment at the library and, you know, give them the support that they needed.
Finance, when we did have our discussions, we did discuss us being open to if some of these articles were brought down, maybe reduced a bit, we might be more favorable for them.
I would like to motion to remove 8, 9, and 10. Remove them.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Do we have a second for discussion? Yeah. Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to remove line items 8, 9, and 10 from Article 8.
Okay.
May I be heard on the motion? Once I give it to you?
As soon as you're got it written out. Can I have a second over here? Okay. You want to be heard?
So, basically, I'd like to move to remove 8, 9, and 10 from Article number 8. I appreciate the efforts from the boards, of course, acting in what they feel is at the best interest of the town. What it seems to be a big concern for me is that there seems to be kind of a recurring theme where, when everybody was concerned that things were gonna be horrible in April, tough decisions were made, and rightly so. Where I'm caught up is, I haven't seen anything improve since then. In fact, a lot of things have gotten worse. The economic outlook is dire, to say the best. I mean, it's pretty, pretty bad. So, I'm having a hard time understanding what has changed in the rationale in some of these board members and thinking that, well, in April, we probably should have made the cuts because we just didn't know. But now, we're good to go forward how we would have normally. I mean, I guess the only thing that they could argue has changed, that the state has promised to give us money, but if we look at the state, I mean, they're beyond broke. So, I don't understand how we can be reversing some of these decisions and deciding to be paying for things that, quite frankly, don't seem to be needs, but rather wants. Thank you.
Would you like to respond?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to speak...
To the motion?
I'd like to speak against his motion.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm in opposition for the motion by Mr. Faunt. And I'd like to make one, several points, actually. First of all, Article, or Project 10 there, the $29,196. In 2018, Article 40 passed by this town meeting appropriated the money for that article, and you'll find that in the addition, in the language in the original motion, where it says to be transferred from funds left over from Article 40, annual town meeting in May 2018. So, we've already, that's why we supported this. We've already decided that this was a priority, and Town Meeting already decided that we wanted to spend money on this. As for the light poles, we were explained that that was a liability issue at the fields where debris had come down during storms. And so, that's why we took that seriously and voted in favor of that. And I'll just say something about the library, Project 8 and 10 together. It's really not that much money. The library project was defeated several years ago, and the library seems to be getting, pardon my forwardness, a little bit disrespected. So, we thought that this was an appropriate time to give them what they needed.
Any other further debate on the motion to remove? Oh, over here. Sorry, I haven't seen anyone over here. There's flags in my way. Please step up.
Lorraine Bergio...
Could you step into the green box, please? It's just the microphone.
Oh, in the green box.
Thank you.
Lorraine Bergio, 42 Interp Street. I'd like to speak on 8 and 10 specifically. We have cut the library... We have cut the library budget by approximately twenty-six percent. Uh, however, we've voted to approve stipends for volunteers, okay, to the extent of a few thousand dollars. So, to me, I think we've done enough to the library. We should give them what they need. They're phenomenal. Uh, they've been wonderful this summer, and I think the twenty-six percent cut is sufficient, uh, and we should give them number eight and ten to maintain their facility in a good fashion, since we couldn't put in a new library. That's all.
Good morning. I can't see you, but I know you're in the green box.
Debbie Gray, six Pine Ridge Lane. I would like to ask if the fire chief could speak to Article Ten for the library as well. There is a safety issue incorporated in that.
Good morning. Uh, in conjunction with the library some time ago, they had asked us, I should say, in, in conjunction with their proposed modifications, if adding an exit door, an additional exit door would be helpful. We had done, along with the police, some training relative to active shooters and such, and we did suggest that that additional door would be uh a positive, or have a positive impact on public safety within the library. So, I would support uh that particular section of this article. If I could make one comment while I'm here, folks, one of the things that Capital does every year is provide us with the tools that we need to do our jobs. Removing a police cruiser, as long as Chief Splain is okay with that, then of course I would never speak against. Uh, but I do suggest to you all, these are tools that the departments need to do their jobs every year. Be very careful when you start to remove these things. Uh, they back up very quickly, and when you start talking about equipment that's hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's pushed out year after year, uh, it piles up rarely quickly, and it can compromise our ability to do the tasks that you asked of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone, go ahead, ma'am.
For Evergreen Street, and actually, that was just a really good segue to what I was going to say about Project Eight, which is um to replace computers uh for library staff. We all know that the library staff has faced significant cuts, and therefore, the library is being asked to work a lot more efficiently, and their computers right now are failing. Certainly, many people, myself included, have dealt with failing computers. They get slower, they crash, they lose productivity, you lose time, and now we have fewer library staff trying to serve the public, and we need technology. Technology is what makes this whole world work, right? Especially now. And so, I would just really reiterate what the chief just said, that these are tools that the, that our, our services need to provide what we're looking for. So, please pass this article.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to be heard over there?
Hi, thank you. I'm Marie Grossman. I'm the IT Manager for Kingston, and I would like to speak on Project Eight of replacing the computers for the Kingston Library. As I work at the library frequently, every single week, I spend a lot of time reformatting and uh and repairing the staff computer. It's very time-consuming, and I'm running out of parts. I do hope that you vote on the replacement of the computers for the staff, as they need this to do their work. Uh, it could take a day sometimes for me to repair a computer, and I don't have computers to put in place. So, I ask that you have a favorable, favorable, favorable vote to replace the computers at the library.
Thank you. Sir?
Jim Sewell, fifty-one Indian Pond Road. Um, I just wanted to speak to number nine um as far as the safety issue, and uh, we, as the Finance Committee, were split on the vote. I voted for it. Um, I actually went over there and looked at those poles, and also looked at the termite damage and ant damage at the bottom. And although I'm not an expert, the poles have, I'm guessing, somewhere around five to six hundred pounds of weight on those lights at the top, and they're basically old telephone poles that were sunk in the ground, and from what I understand, weren't sunk to the proper level, um, et cetera. So, I propose, John, that we, that is a safety issue, and that you, if you could, remove it from your motion, uh, and let that motion pass. Um, the portion's broken down into two amounts. About thirty-two thousand dollars is to replace the pole, and about five thousand dollars is to replace the light at the basketball court. Um, I had a problem with the light at the basketball court, but because the trucks will be there with the equipment, it made fiscal sense to do both at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
And Mr. Moderator, if I could just make two comments, and I think our new information uh for Project Nine, just to piggyback off of the comments prior, uh, the Recreation Commission initially looked at replacing all the lights uh at the baseball fields at the Reed. Uh, they scaled down their project to save expenses. So, this is just uh Lutz Field and the basketball court right there. And then on Project Ten, uh regarding the safety issue, one additional point is that there is no line of sight right now between the library and the Adams Center across the street, and included in this would be uh making a window so that the staff have visual access to the Adams Center across the street, because they should be able to see, you know, they manage that property, they take care of that property. Uh, I mean, it's taken care by facilities, but they're responsible for what goes on there during the day, and they would like to be able to see what's happening there. So, just those two points.
Seeing, you want to be heard? No. Seeing no further debate, I'm gonna move the question on um the amendment to remove numbers eight, nine, and ten from Article Eight. All those in favor of removing them say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Ms. McKinnon, would you accept a friendly amendment to the appropriation amount, taking the sixty-one thousand dollars for the cruiser off the amount?
I'll make a motion to amend. Motion to amend that the sum of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, sum of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars be transferred from free cash. Uh, thirty thousand be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six be transferred from the funds left over from Article Forty, Annual Town Meeting in May twenty-eighteen. Set expenditures to be under the direction of departments named below.
Do I have a second?
Oh. Sorry, about the uh three hundred and fifty-three, nine twenty. So, the, this appropriation, the sum of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty be transferred from free cash. I can read that again if I need. This is the reduction of the sixty-one thousand for the police cruiser.
So, I'm gonna accept that as a friendly amendment. Uh, one math.
Do you have here? Four-one-three, one-one, and then three-nine-one, three-five-three, nine-nine-o. So, this one is right, number nine-nine-zero.
All right, let me read this again. I'm s- I'm sorry, this kind of threw us off here with the amendment. Um, move that the sum of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars be transferred from free cash. Thirty, do you need me to read the whole article?
Yes.
Okay. Thirty thousand be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six be transferred from funds left over from Article Forty, Annual Town Meeting in May twenty-eighteen. Account number zero-one-six, one-zero, seven-two-five-four-six. Set expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named below.
Apparently, we have different calculators.
All right, we're good.
You got them down? Can you, can you read? Please.
You want me to read the whole motion?
Please.
Okay. Third time's a charm.
Can you read?
Yes, yes, I read audiobooks, so I will read very slowly. Move that the sum of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars be transferred from free cash, thirty thousand be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six be transferred from funds left over from Article Forty.
It doesn't add up.
Doesn't add up. You're off by seventy dollars.
Carol, can you?
Yep. You're telling me fourth time.
It's a charm, they say.
Okay, all right.
Oh, my God.
Good Lord, right? Okay, I'll read it again.
Please.
Okay. Move that the sum of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars be transferred from free cash, thirty thousand be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six be transferred from funds left over from Article Forty, Annual Town Meeting in May twenty-eighteen. Account number zero-one-six, one-zero, seven-two-five-four-six. Set expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named below.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
That's why we need to fund the schools, math.
I, I just took it as a second, second. I don't need a second on that. So, seeing no further debate on the previous holds, all those in favor of motion for Article Eight say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries minimal opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore. Nope, Bob Poska. Um, motion, uh, Article Eleven, Bob Poska.
Good morning. Move that the town appropriate one million, five hundred thousand dollars to pay the cost of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing an upgraded water distribution system, including construction and/or reconstruction of related pump stations, the extension of related water lines, the acquisition of any easement and land necessary to complete the, and improvements described above. The treasurer with the approval of the selectment is authorized to borrow the amount under, under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, Paragraph Four, or pursuant to any other enabled authority, enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes. The, um, the town, therefore, the board of selectmen is authorized to contract, far, and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed and to pay such costs by like amount. I would turn your attention to the uh document that you got earlier today when you walked in. This is the one titled Town of Kingston Annual Meeting Additional Documents, Saturday, August eighth. If you go down to Article Eleven, it exactly explains what we're, what we want to do here. If you'll bear with me, I'll, I'll read it, because I'm guessing, with the volume of material that you got walking in here, a lot of you haven't had a chance to read it. This article provides funding for the permitting and construction of a water distribution system to the southern end of Kingston, therefore bringing high-pressure water to the economic targeted zone in the town of Kingston. To understand the importance of that, we're talking about fire suppression systems and buildings that will be built. In combination with the wastewater treatment plant expansion project, this project will allow businesses to invest in underdeveloped and undeveloped properties located in the southern end of town, therefore creating incremental commercial tax revenue, which will minimize the financial tax burden for the homeowners. Here's the key. Funds will be reimbursed through the Mass Works Grant. To date, we have received seventy-five thousand dollars of Mass Work Grants and have spent one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents of those funds for payment to Comprehensive Environmental, who is our consulting engineers. Folks, that section of town is the one place in Kingston where there is room for expansion for our economic commercial base. Absent high-pressure water in that area, we are basically dead in the water. So, it is essential that we extend the water main, the high-pressure water main, into that area in order to service any additional commercial properties that will be built in that area. It's the place in town that we, we as a body have decided is the best interest of Kingston to put our industry. So, this is just another step along the way, and if you look at the vote, everybody that voted, voted in favor. With one, I think there was one extension.
I'm opening this for debate, Mr. Harlow.
Daniel Harlow, thirty-one Howland's Lane. So, is the entire expansion covered by, or essentially ultimately is supposed to be covered by the Mass Works? So, we are shelling out the money first, and then it will be fully reimbursed by the Mass Works Grant?
Yes.
And that's a grant that we already have. I just want I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Say it again?
I didn't hear you.
Oh, that's a grant that we actually already have?
Yes. Yes, we have the grant, it's been approved. Harlow, wrongly.
I do my own thing.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing no further debate, I will move the question. Two-thirds, majority vote. Board of Selectmen favorable 5-0, Finance Committee favorable 5-0, Capital Planning favorable 5-0. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Two-thirds motion on a voice vote carries unanimously. Onto Article 12, KES Rooftops School Committee. Good morning. You want to just show that just up? Because there's three versions, I want to make sure.
Is this on? Okay. Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. I'm also the chairman of the Elementary School Committee. I was just pointing out that there's a typo in the sixth line from the bottom up. There were two occurrences of the word "that," so I'm just going to read it with just one occurrence, so that's all that was about. And I don't think it's fair that I have the longest motion of the day.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, and I'll...
Okay. The move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $937,414 for the purpose of paying costs of MSBA ARP rooftop unit replacement, Kingston Elementary School, 150 Main Street, Kingston, Mass. 02364, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town of Kingston has applied for a grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the town administrator. To meet this appropriation, the Kingston Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Kingston acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, and any project cost the town of Kingston incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Kingston, provided that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on the proposed repair project, the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Kingston and the MSBA. Of the $937,414, the town previously approved $200,000 on May 4, 2019. Therefore, an additional $737,414 is being requested overall.
Having a second, I'll open it up to debate. Seeing no debate? We have a question. Can you answer that, the funding source?
I can't speak to the funding source, but I do know that the MSBA is going to be reimbursing...
Yes, sir. Seeing no further debate, I'll move the question. This is two-thirds majority vote. Board of Selectmen favorable 5-0, Finance Committee favorable 5-0, Capital Planning 4-0 favorable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 13.
Move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the Employment Liability Reserve Fund, and to increase the maximum allowable amount of the fund to $100,000.
Just to be clear, there's a second version of this in the supplemental handout, so that everyone has the additional documents, I'm sorry, that everyone has the right thing in front of them. I heard a second. Any debate? Seeing none, this is a majority vote, favorable by the Board of Selectmen, favorable by the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number 14. Al Pike. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Move that the sum of $26,870 be appropriated for Sampson Fund expenditures in fiscal year 2021, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $26,290.55 be appropriated from the Elizabeth B. Sampson Memorial Fund, and $579.45 be appropriated from the unexpended balances of the following prior year appropriation from the Sampson Fund. Article 5 of 2017 Town Meeting, $134.67. Article 11 of 2018 Town Meeting, 3 cents. Article 11 of 2019 Town Meeting, $444.75, for a total of $579.45. And further, that the expenditures be under the supervision of the departments or organizations, and for the purposes and in the amounts as follows. Kingston Board of Health, well-testing program, $6,000. Kingston Business Association, waterfront festival, police and EMTs, $2,000. Kingston Fire Department, announcement sign, $1,370. Kingston Fire Department, Christmas luminaries, $3,000. Kingston Police Department, National Night Out, $6,000. Kingston Recreation Department, grays community entertainment, $5,000. Kingston Selectmen, Memorial Day Parade, $3,500, for a total of $26,870.
Second, just to clarify, if these events don't happen, the money goes back into the fund? If the events don't happen, the money will go back to the fund, correct?
Yes, the money is returned to the fund for use in the next year.
Thank you. I have a second, I'll open this for debate. I see a hand in the back.
Good morning. My name is Dorothy Pat Harlow, I live at 3 Pebble Lane, Kingston, Massachusetts. And before I ask motion to amend, I would ask clarification on a question you got in the Board of Health using Sampson Fund. Is there anyone from the Board of Health here that could address my question? So I will go forward.
Hold on, I think we have someone at the mic on the right side.
Hi, Mrs. Harlow, Heidi Whipple, 35 Lake Street. I'm one of your members of the Board of Health.
So, the question is... Good morning to you also. The question is, how is the money from the Sampson Fund being used for well-testing?
I would have to defer to the chairman, Joe Casna. I know that we do use part of the Sampson Fund in doing well, doing some of the childhood education and things like that at the library. I am not up to date as to the well-testing beyond the scope of what the VNA is doing, which the Board of Health right now is readdressing as our VNA if Cape Cod is leaving Kingston as our VNA of choice, and we are putting together a job description and hiring a public health nurse for the town, and that is all in the works right now.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry I don't have your information, I'd be happy to follow up on it and get to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you so much. So I would like to motion that the request by the BOH be amended and restrict its $6,000 strictly for educational purposes, but not for testing of private wells. Historically, and I'm just going to go based on the information that I have.
You're going to have to... Do I have a second on the motion? And then I'm going to need that written out. Okay. Can we reduce that to writing, please?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't hear with my mask on.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? If I could, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to change line item 1, Kingston Board of Health, to well-being testing program. That'll clear up the...
We...
I know, that's a mistake. So, in the description, the question before that was raised by Deb was whether or not you could amend the article, and we looked at the existing legislation, and there does not appear to be such a restriction in the actual legislation. I don't know how that made it to the description. Yeah, that's just in the description, so it's not, it's unnecessary to amend it, but yes. Yes. Yep. Yeah, Mrs. Harlow, we do need your motion in writing too, because I'm not sure...
I have it with me. Shirley.
So am I on? Yeah, okay. I'm just going to read it for her because, so she's not walking back and forth. So, motion to amend... First, we have to let that motion pass. So, motion to amend Board of Health's well-testing, the funds of the Sampson Fund, not for the purpose of private well-testing. Got it? So the idea is to restrict that $6,000 to not be allowable for private well-testing.
Do I have a second? Would you like to be heard on your motion?
Sure. Approximately January this year, the chair of the BOH went to the Finance Committee in Osford, $12,000 to have the private wells tested in the town of Kingston. Finance Committee in Osford, $12,000 to have the private wells tested in the town of Kingston. He got a bargain on it, be $125 per test, and that would really suffice if he got the, um, money, $12,000 that he requested. Uh, the Finance Committee denied his request. I followed up with a meeting at the BOH, the Board of Health, I think January 6th, discussed what was presented to the Finance Committee, and most of the members of the Board were not familiar with the discussion at all. I heard something of it, but nothing that was consequential. Then there was the Sampson meeting, Sampson Fund meeting, and there, there was a discussion as using, uh, the funds for what? And it was basically educational. There was a disagreement in regards to using it for testing private wells. And I concur with that. People, though, they don't know, the Board of Health has no idea how many private wells do exist in the town of Kingston. And if he gets the $6,000 that he's asking for, that will not be sufficient to test the 90 or 100, whatever, wells are available in Kingston. Also, private wells are just that, the private wells. They're not community, they're not government, they're private wells, that the people who own the wells own it. I think you'll agree with that, it's federal law. So my question is, why would someone be able to take money and do testing on someone's private well and then give the results to the Water Commissioner? That's the purpose of this testing. I think the Water Commission is very well aware of what's going on in town. And there are a lot of anecdotal stories about Harry Hahnby, who had a tainted well, or Jimmy Stackback, who had a tainted well. Any of the private well owners in this town that I have talked to test their own wells? Also, if they do want to test their own wells, it won't cost them $125 necessarily. There are vi- uh, variable amounts of money for testing the wells. And lastly, and more importantly, it doesn't go to someone else to whom the information should not be given, because they're private wells. So I'm asking that the members of the audience here vote to amend the proposal by the Board of Health and deny the use of the Sampson Funds for private well testing. Thank you.
Would you like to be heard?
35 Lake Street. It is the Board of Health's position that testing the private wells, it could unval- could uncover valuable information that would be necessary to the town to keep us safe and healthy. That is the Board's stance on private testing of the wells.
Goes to the town. The town is aware of the water situation here. Private people, private wells are owned by people. They don't need anyone else to focus on what the Board of Health may want at this time on their private property. And they shouldn't be able to secure funds for barely other purposes other than having their wells tested. They can test their own wells, they're competent. People in Kingston are not stupid, they're aware of what's going on, more so than ever. And I think that they would respect using the money for more educational processes. For example, he's going down to the lake, going to the ocean, take some water, test it, see what it's all about, having a class day with the Water Commissioner, rather than taking money really specific for other reasons and using it for testing of public property. Thank you, and thank you.
Sir, would you like to be heard? Come this, ma'am, if you could come this way. Go ahead, sir.
Richard Loring, Duty Tremont Street, Kingston, Chairman of Kingston Water Commissioner. We had a number of discussions with Joe Kazner about this very issue. And it was the position of the Water Commissioners at that time that we felt that any information or any discussions that the Board of Health was going to have with the town of Kingston on private well testing should be of the informational, uh, characteristics only, and we should not be involved in testing private wells. If in fact the Board of Health authorizes or pays for the testing of private wells and a problem then is found, is it then the responsibility and the liability of the town of Kingston to repair a private water system? We felt that that was absolutely wrong. Our system is well documented as far as testing. The testings that we do are done by DEP requirements, and we protect what we have in the town for each and every resident that's on the system. And we did not feel that we should be liable for potential private wells on private property. So when we left Joe Kazner after the last meeting, it was supposed to be for educational purposes only, and no testing was to be, uh, involved. I think Mrs. Harlow's suggestion that it be, uh, the amendment be changed for educational purposes only is a very sound, uh, position, and I think the town should vote along that lines. Thank you.
I was gonna do that. I don't see any further debate. I'm gonna move the, um, the amendment to, um, do we want to restrict the use of the funds to public wells only? So if you want to restrict it, you're gonna say yes. If you don't want to restrict it and deny the motion, then you'll say no. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So now we're still back to, um, Article 14. Any other debate? So Finance, I'm gonna move for a vote, but the Board of Selectmen, uh, was, they have new numbers. 14. Sampson Fund, I have Board of Selectmen, 3-2, Finance Committee, 5-0. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries by majority vote. Moving on to number 15. Board of Selectmen, Bill Levon.
Hold on one second. There was someone who approached the stage wanting to...
Move a question out of order.
Uh, yes, on Carroll-Bosay, 29 Wapping Road. I was requesting moving Article 20 up. We have someone here who needs importantly to speak to that article through, has a family 80th birthday party. She must be a...
Ma'am, you making a motion to advance Article 20 to be heard right now out of order?
Yes.
Well, the bylaws state that they should be taken in order without a motion. So someone just made a motion. So if there's a second, then according to the bylaws, I have to take it. Second. I'll hear you on your advancement of Article 20.
Oh, thank you. Um, there's, uh, there are folks here who feel that Article 20 is very important, and there are some voices who I think you all want to hear about Article 20, because it concerns us all. Uh, one person in particular has an 80th birthday party for a family member at noon. And so I'm sorry to interrupt the flow, but would you mind altering the order and moving Article 20 up, please?
Moving up?
I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Now I had a second. Does anyone else want to be heard on that? Majority vote. You want to be heard?
I just, I just want to point out that some of the articles before us have quorum requirements, and this one doesn't. So that's why it was initially pushed to the end in case we missed quorum. And that's all I wanted to say. I wasn't trying. I thought it was worth noting.
So all in favor advancing the motion 20 to right now will say aye. All those opposed will say no. All those in favor of advancing Article 20 to be heard immediately? All those opposed? I'm gonna count it. I can't, no, nope. All those in fa- can you take your blue cards out? All those in favor of it moving, advancing Article 20 to be heard immediately, please put your blue cards in the air. Did you count Finance? Finance, if you have a vote on this. Okay. Mr. Pelvin, 18. DeVasler? Get the board up. How many you got? All those opposed, put your cards up. Did you get the board up? The motion to advance Article 20 to be heard right now, uh, passed. You want to? You want to have a sit? Yeah. It's already passed.
Paul Gallagher, 8 Longview Drive. I just, I just want to make it clear that we're moving this out of order. Um, if, if we vote on this article and then everybody leaves or a number of people leaves, we will not have quorum to finish the next three articles. So I'm only gonna ask that if we get through this article, the person that needs to get to a birthday party leave, but everybody else stay. Thank you.
Article 20, Jess Kramer.
Move, move Article 20 as printed in the annual town meeting warrant. This article will allow the town to grant an easement through a small piece of privately owned property to allow access to privately owned land, which is being considered for development. The private parcel of land in question is approximately 100 acres and is currently owned by the Sisters of Divine Providence. A major developer has an option to purchase that property and will only exercise that option if they can gain access through a small portion of a lot owned by the town. Please refer to the last three pages of the handout entitled "Supporting Documentation," Saturday, June 13, 2020, for maps and aerials of the privately held parcel in question, as well as the adjacent easement that is being requested. The 100-acre privately owned parcel abuts Colony Place in Plymouth. The developer's vision is to build a 1 million square foot eco-friendly professional park. The easement before town meeting provides a restriction, ensuring that the land cannot be used for residential development. If the easement is approved, the developer will conduct a feasibility study, including an assessment of environmental concerns, wetlands, and the like. It is of note that any development on this land may not violate the Wetlands Protection Act, National Heritage Rules, or DEP environmental regulations, and the developer has not represented any intention to do so. At this time, the large property in question has not been mapped for any of those relevant environmental issues. Such mapping would be required in order for this project to move forward. Therefore, any representation at this time that this property is ecologically unique, protected, or warrants preservation for some environmental reason is simply conjecture. If an easement were to be granted with today's vote, the developer would still be required to go through a standard public hearing process before the planning board in order to move forward with the development of the land. Every citizen would have the opportunity to speak in favor of or against the proposed project. In addition, the planning board could deny the application if it's off fit. The planning board may cho- also choose to condition, limit, or alter the developer's proposal based upon the hearing process and all matters of substance. Any project developed on this privately held parcel would require water and sewer be provided by Plymouth, because the infrastructure already exists up to the site through Colony Place. Further, all traffic to and from the site would be directed through Colony Place in Plymouth. This particular project is unique in that Kingston would receive the benefit of the tax revenue without incurring any significant burden to infrastructure, traffic, or services. If this project were to reach its full potential, it would generate approximately $1 million per year in tax revenue for the town of Kingston. Growing our commercial tax base offsets the residential tax burden, giving homeowners the much-needed relief that they have been asking for. I have always been very open in my desire to protect and preserve towns, town-owned land in open space, but I am equally firm in my belief that we should not create unreasonable barriers to prevent private landowners from achieving the highest and best use of their land. The land for this proposed development is not owned by Kingston. Only a small strip over which the easement would be granted is. So in effect, those opposed to granting this easement are using the easement as a means to interfere with private land use. The repercussions of this maneuvering reach far beyond this project. It will send a clear message to the development community that Kingston is anti-business. I respect those who are passionate about preserving the land and the forest, but I implore you to find a path to do it the right way. Propose thoughtful land buyback programs, lobby preservation trusts and stewardship organizations to invest in the land and hold it in conservation, or forge partnerships with developers so that they will willingly set aside some of their property as designated open space. But please, don't throw up barriers to private land use by denying modest and reasonable concessions such as easement. Please vote yes on Article 20.
Yes. Yes, sir. Far right corner.
Uh, yes, Tom Boush- Tom Boushad, 6 Quail Run. I'm also the chairman of the planning board. Um, this article was proposed to be heard last year, and I had an issue. Um, and the issue was that when this, this was originally zoned residential and it, it got changed at, uh, prior town meeting, um, to commercial industrial, uh, to accommodate this project. The issue that I had last year, and I still may have, unless someone has an answer for me, is that the underlying zoning of residential still remains in me, is that the underlying zoning of residential still remains in place. That's the way this works. You change zoning, the underlying zoning still exists. We had told the developers, the planning board that is, that we do not want residential in there. It would be a nightmare, going to have to provide police and fire, drive miles really into Plymouth in order to do that. So, we asked that they would not put residential. So last year, when I, I asked for the article to be pulled, I wanted some assurance that this would and could not be used for residential. I was told by, I believe, Town Council at the time, that it would be almost impossible to, um, to, to hold them to any agreement about residential or commercial. So that's my major concern, and I would like someone to give me an answer whether we can legally hold them to any agreement.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The specific easement agreement that has been drawn up excludes the use of the easement if it is developed residentially. So, in essence, it would, they would not have access to the property if they ever tried to think about doing something with underlying residential use. I can ask Jason Silva to come up and speak about the underlying zoning there. I'm not, I don't want to speak to that, but I do know that there has been an explicit exclusion in the drafting of this easement that says that it cannot be, the easement will be nullified, basically, if the developer were to pursue residential use. Is that? Yeah. Does that answer your question? Yes. The easement agreement itself restricts, the easement will be nullified if residential development is pursued on this parcel. So, they won't be able to do it. We've blocked, it's been blocked in that way.
This has been cleared through Town Council?
So, we weren't involved in this easement, the drafting of this easement, but I will tell you that a easement of record is something that runs with the land and binds it. It's essentially covenant that runs with the land from transfer to transfer. So it's in, in infinity.
All right. Can I ask one more question?
Do we have the easement document here? I could, I mean-
I think the question was answered. Do you have a second question?
My, my, my other question is, what about a 40B? Would this agreement stop a 40B? From my understanding, a 40B can go just about anywhere.
Anybody address that?
So, again, I mean, a 40B would be a residential use, and it's my understanding, and I can pull the actual easement agreement, that the easement would be nullified and no longer granted if any type of residential use were pursued on this parcel.
Would Town Council answer if a 40B could trump any agreement, please?
I couldn't say. What I can say is that on 40B, the local zoning and permitting requirements are eliminated, but this is a restriction of record, which is a little different. But I, to be honest, Mr. Bouchard, I'm, I'm just not 100% sure.
Thanks. Yeah, introduce yourself.
So, Jason Silva, building and zoning. So I've worked a little bit with this project in the past, and I think an important distinction-
Sir, can you step up closer so the microphone, you gotta be closer.
Can't make me any taller.
I, I, I-
No, don't touch. It'll hear. So, Jason Silva, Building and Zoning. I've worked a little bit with this project, and I think an important distinction to understand is that the, this easement is specific to the parcel that the town of Kingston owns, and that in no way that the, the private parcel, which Jessica indicated, can be encumbered or in some way addressed through this easement.
Hold on a second. Can anybody hear him? Okay, sir. The height, it's not that it's just, you gotta stay close to the point.
So, this is, it's an important distinction to understand that this easement is on a specific parcel, and it does not represent the, the large parcel, and that any encumbrances in this easement will not be able to affect the original large parcel that people are concerned of. And so, the appropriate drafting of the easement certainly can restrict, or condition, or control the use of the Kingston parcel, but there's no way that we can address or condition a private parcel. So, to address Tom's question from a 40B standpoint, the applicant may, or a applicant may be able to still build on that parcel by providing access from the Route 80 side of the parcel, not going through Kingston and do whatever they may like, which is still matching the underlying zoning, which the town of Kingston allows for. So in this unique circumstance, the developer wants to provide access through Colony Place as an additional finger of the Colony Place, Colony Plaza, and Sawyer's Reach elements of that overall project. And so what you'd see is, right now, Colony Plaza, Colony Place, and Sawyer's Reach all have different flavors or, or feelings to them. Some are outdoor shopping, some are lodgebox stores. The Sawyer's Reach property has condos and residential, and that this finger or this commerce center would be another phase of the Saxon Partners' ideas. They've not indicated they want to build residential, but I do understand Tom's concerns. I just don't think that the easement in itself can provide the belt and suspenders that the town looks for, and that the process, should the applicant go forward, the special permit process, the environmental reach that the developer would have to do, would be the place where we could sort of condition, control the, the development itself. So again, the easement hopefully can steer them in the right direction, put as many restrictions as we can, but we just can't provide all those restrictions in the parcel that we own by Kingston, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Deb Ventora. I have been a resident here from Seven France Lane, and I've been a resident here for 30 years and a teacher of 31 years. I do know that the Sisters of Divine did propose, they purchased that with saving that land. So if you go back and look into your articles, that land is a, it's called the Atlantic Coastal Pine Bearing Forest. We are three in a region, in this, in the world, three regions in the world only. Sorry, three in the region, this coastal pine-bearing forest. Our town has this. This is something that's unique, not to anyone else in, in our, in our country. We have one of three, and they're asking for an easement to get placed in, and they cannot guarantee you, because once you go from here, they can say, yes, we can vote no. It will go to the state if they really want to, this company. Once they put $2 million into it, the state's not gonna say, oh, you put that much money in it, we don't want it. My gentleman friend that had been up here over and over, he stated, where are we? We are in a collapsed business. We are in a whole, uh, town mall for Kingston that has no business in it, but you're asking to kill 67, or possibly kill 60, there's 67 rare and endangered species within our town, right, in, in this parcel area, and they're saying it isn't. It's being used right now for children who cannot be part of our regular school system. We have schools coming and using this parcel of land. If it was up to the Sisters of Divine, I know they would not be asking us to do this.
Ma'am, we're not gonna talk about what someone else's opinion is.
So, I'm looking at this. When you look at this plan, how much is too much? We were gonna tear down another forest to put up more buildings and restaurants when we're in a pandemic, a social-emotional group of children. We have, it, the, the country is talking about it. Our children is in social and emotional issues. I teach over in Duxbury, and I push for outdoor learning. I've raised money for that, and I feel this is where we need to think about it. Our children are being diagnosed at a-
Ma'am, we need to wrap it. There's a whole line.
Diagnosed at a high rate with social, emotional, with anxiety, obesity, depression, all of it. So I'm asking that you vote no with me, because this is a part of our property that you can't get back once you voted no.
Thank you. Can you come this way, though? This way? Thank you so much. Sir? Yeah, I saw, the, the line was, was 10 deep before there was even somebody over here. I will get you. I saw you. Sir?
Gary Langenbach, 164 Elm Street. I've been a lot, a lot, involved in a lot of activities in Kingston for the last 30 years. I've gone to a lot of planning board meetings. A lot of plans change, and I'll get back to that. I've seen them evolve. If we grant this easement to a developer and put the codicil in that it can't be used for residential, I'm pretty confident they're gonna try to break that, mainly because it's not financially feasible right now to do what they want to do. I suspect they will agree to the easement you will grant it, the selectmen. They'll build the road through Kingston's property, buy the property, spend a couple, couple million dollars to do that, and then they come back to us and say, it's not financially feasible to do what I propose. We haven't even seen finite plans. All we've seen is these wonderful conceptual, which aren't wonderful to me, by the way. I suspect if, if this went to the courts, we'd lose. I really do. That codicil means nothing. If they buy that land, it is zoned residential, our 20 and our 40. And I, and I agree with Tom Bouchard. We, we've seen nothing except promises. I urge you to vote no on this.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Lindsey Wilson, 29, Taltimbers Lane. I was on the Board of Selectmen when we approved the zoning, and we spent a lot of time to try to tailor it to address a lot of these concerns. To, I've also been a commercial real estate lawyer for over 20 years. I can say two things to Tom Bouchard's questions. One is that the easement is enforceable, runs with the land, and would apply to them. And two is even if they or a successor tried to propose a 40B, with the easement then being nullified, one of the few grounds where you can oppose a 40B is inadequate access. So, unless there was another feasible source of ingress egress, we're putting something in place with the easement to give us that protection. The other thing to keep in mind is, we have tried to tailor and target the development of this parcel for office and industrial to give it the best chance to be used for that. And by doing this and approving this easement for a developer who that's their business, it gives us a far greater chance than if we don't do this. The Sisters of Divine Providence are closing their high school, they're in serious financial issues, so this land is gonna get sold. If we don't proactively tailor and design something that we've, as we've done, then the most likely thing would be housing that'll get built there. So if you do not want housing on this land eventually, you need to support a targeted, tailored development for the office and industrial, especially where all of the traffic and primary services are coming through Plymouth. It's a revenue source. We talk all the time about trying to get alternative sources of revenue other than just our taxes, and this is a potential million dollars a year right off the top of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Brian Brown, Sixth Harvest Drive. As a lifelong resident of Kingston, my permanent concern with this article is the effect it could have on our drinking water. The land that would be developed as a result of the easement falls within the water supply protection zones of six of the town's seven active wells. Furthermore, the development of this parcel is in direct conflict with the 2017 Kingston Master Plan and the 2015 Outdoor Space and Recreation Plan. Both clearly and repeatedly state that every effort should be made to permanently protect this region from development. I'm gonna quote for a second, so just bear with me, the 2017 Master Plan, directly out of it. Kingston's largest remaining forest tract lying south of Route 44 represents the greatest conservation opportunity for groundwater protection. Fortunately, Kingston's zoning bylaws include water resource overlay districts that currently restrict the land use and the recharge areas in order to proactively reduce the risk of groundwater contamination. The 2015 OSRP Outdoor Space and Recreation Plan, Section 5, Pages 82 and 83, concerted effort, and I'm quoting, "Concertained efforts should be made to work with the Sisters of Divine Providence and other area landowners to permanently protect this land for its unique topography, core habitat, and high ecological integrity, and its irreplaceable role as a regionally significant groundwater recharge area." Respondents on the 2015 OSRP survey indicated that protection of Kingston's water supply is of foremost importance. I could go on quoting, but I guess the point is made. Our own planning has designated this area as non-commercial use and needs to be concerned. We're now opening up the gates for the question mark we're talking about, and we don't need more space like this to affect and possibly to affect our, our long-term water supply. We got parcels over by the MBTA, we have parcels over William Goldway, Precision Drive. We don't need to destroy this natural area and jeopardize our water supply. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you get one more? You want to respond? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. Sure.
I was just wondering if a water commissioner is available to speak to the issue regarding the well-water, water supply, and how this might affect that? I don't know if Bob Koska is available to speak to that. If not, we can hold that question.
Okay, you can, you can hold that if anyone wants to come up. Thank you.
You're welcome. Richard Lawrence, 33, Terrence. Read it again. Bob Koska is in the building somewhere, but he's not here. But also, water commissioner, we looked at this proposal in a very brief meeting with the developer many years ago. Any proposals that they come forward with as far as the development of that parcel, there are certain requirements as far as open space and recharge areas. We try to be proactive in protecting the water source in the town of Kingston. This is in the overlay district for the wells on the south end of town, but it does not preclude the use of that land for our develop, uh, development, provided they adhere to the requirements of the, the board and work closely with ourselves and our engineers to make sure that we protect the groundwater. We do not believe at this point that the groundwater overlay districts are so restrictive that it would absolutely prohibit any development. It's something that the developers need to work with us and with our engineers to make sure that we protect what is most essential to you, and that's clean, pure water, as we do now.
Thank you.
I could just follow up on that, because the point I'd like to make that, that I didn't bring up before, is that the zoning, as it exists now, limits how much surface area can be, can be built on that property. That's in direct conflict with a commercial type of venue. So what you're gonna wind up with, I think the gentleman said before, is you're probably gonna wind up in a scenario where we're going to have a 40B or some kind of housing that we don't want to have in that space.
Yes?
Elaine Fiori, 60, Cold Street. Two facts. One, there's a draft deed restriction that was put together with the developer and council, KJ worked on it, stating this property could not be used for residential. Two, special permit, a condition of the special permit could be no residential use. And the developer will not spend time or money- And the developer will not spend time or money talking with boards and committees until they know they have access to the property. All the vetting, water, anything else needs to go before Planning Board and Conservation for any restrictions that they may have in place. So to recap, there is a draft deed restriction for this property to limit it to commercial use only prohibiting residential.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Hall from One Prospect Street. I'm a high school science teacher, and I work for the alternative high school called Plymouth Harbor Academy from Plymouth Public Schools. And obviously, I'm a resident of Kingston, and I really care about the future of our community. So as a teacher at the academy, I teach my students who were not successful in a traditional school setting. So my school, in addition to local area schools like Sacred Heart and Fall River Prep and MAP Academy, have been visiting Muddy Pond Wilderness, which is off Route 80 on a weekly basis for the last year and a half. This new preserve is directly connected to the proposed development property and is interconnected in many ways. So this proposed development will have catastrophic effects on the lessons being taught there. In this open space that I'm able to bring the students to, they have the opportunity to learn not only how to take water samples or learn ecological awareness and things like that, but also about our very own globally rare ecosystem and all the species and plants that are within it. And it's also a place they can naturally connect with themselves in the crazy world we live in and not always be on their cellphone or their video games and whatnot. So, I mean, I am in favor of finding, you know, more commercial tax revenue. However, I don't believe this is the place for large-scale commercial development. So on behalf of myself and my students and future generations of the community, please vote no on this article, and I really urge you to do that.
Thank you.
Sarah Alter, 41 Landing Road.
Good morning.
I've been to every town meeting for the last thirty-five years, and I'm here today despite my concerns about our health. Like everyone else, I would like to see more tax revenue coming into the town. But I don't see this proposed project for which we would be granting an easement to bring in that revenue. One thing that really bugs me about this, this is at least the third time the same article has been brought before town meeting. It was defeated in the last two. The thing that is disturbing is that if we do have these deed restrictions and these covenants, they have never been made public. The only thing that has gotten promoted here is how much potential revenue we're gonna get and how many jobs we're gonna get. A million dollars a year. Now, think about this, when this was first proposed, it was a very different economic situation. This mall was thriving. But look at every mall around us now. And if you, this is the people who would like to develop this land are the same people who developed Colony Place. If you drive up there and drive around Colony Place and drive behind Walmart and over toward the new Sawyer's Reach, look, it's all been clear cut. It's all been clear cut. And if these people buy this land, that's what we've been led to expect. I was told by a previous town employee that it would be clear cut according to whatever, you know, that that's what has to be done to enable this development. But anyway, I really am disturbed that the public has not gotten the true information about this article. And suddenly here, when we're all here at town meeting, everybody's telling us, "Oh, well, that's already taken care of, it's in an agreement, it's in a codicil." And I know, from what I hear, I don't think it's accurate. But in any case, why have we waited until this point to make it public and only gotten these beautiful pictures? So if you look, I'm gonna say one more thing and then I'll shut up.
After thirty-five years, I don't know if I can slow you down.
Okay. In your supporting documentation, if you look at the supporting documentation for this thing, you'll see a picture of this beautiful mall that you're gonna be driving through that supposedly is eco-friendly. What guarantee do we have? Maybe you all on the boards have seen this, but you needed to share this with us to enable us to make a decent statement about it. But the thing that bothers me, if you will look, another thing, if you will look at the picture at the bottom, you'll see that this development would be a commercial development between already preserved lands of the special environment that we have in Kingston. And what's left, oh, one more quick thing. When twenty years ago, there were forty-five hundred acres of open land in Kingston. Now, there are only twelve hundred. And seven hundred of those are on the north side of Route 44 and five hundred on the south. Anyway, I'm sorry to go on so long, gang, but I really had to say this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hello, Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street. And I moved there after I left Silver Lake, which is where I moved in 1975, first coming to the Kingston. In 1975, this town meeting voted to buy Camp Nicon from the Girl Scouts. The little acre, the little land that is there that you're voting this easement across is a remnant of that Girl Scout land. The town meeting voted to protect Camp Nicon with $250,000 back in 1975 to protect the water resources in Kingston. That's in the article from town meeting. What this easement will do is shatter those resources. And you don't have any reason to believe anything else will happen because there is no plan. There is a drawing in the book, the same drawing that was there in 2016 when it first came to town meeting. There has been no progress made. What Jess Kramer has said just isn't true. First of all, it's not a tiny just piece of land, it's the remnant of Camp Nicon. The only reason it's a remnant is Route 44. We have more land on the north side of Route 44 because of people like us who argued, like Gary Langenbach, who argued and argued and argued with the state and got more land for that to protect the town's wells. There are thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six people today, according to some Google search I did yesterday. Every single one of you drinks sixty gallons of water or more every day. Every day. That's half of what we consume in our wells. Those wells, according to the Water Commission, if you were to sell that water commercially, would get five cents a gallon. According to our two million gallon a day withdrawal this week, let's just say that this town is gonna grow, because chances are it will, that would be thirty-six million dollars a year. So you compare thirty-six million dollars a year with one million dollars in tax revenue that is gonna cause you to spend more than that to protect the water you're gonna have to replace because it won't be there anymore.
Yeah, we're gonna have to wrap it up. I'll give you another thirty seconds, but let's move along.
I would have given you some really nice maps, except the town moderator wouldn't let me give you a handout because I was too late, I was gonna do it yesterday. I would have loved to have shown you the wildlands and the wilderness that is next to this area. This is not one parcel owned by the nuns. This is one parcel of fifty acres owned by the nuns next to the highway and one parcel of fifty acres owned by a guy that used to do forestry in the town. And then it's wedged between the Wildlands Trust and what the Northeast Wilderness Trust has spent five million dollars protecting. You don't think we can get out there and buy that land, given the chance? If you deny this, this group of people here is working toward buying that land to add it to the reservoir of land in this town that protects you each and every single day.
Ma'am, you had to wrap it up.
Every day, even the moderator drinks water from the town's wells.
I do.
And I will take my leave and thank you very much for enduring my path.
Move the question. Move the question.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on one second. There was at least two people behind you that have been standing in that line, so I'm gonna hear for those last two, and then I will hear you.
Daniel Harlow, 31, Howland's Lane. Just gonna keep this real brief. So I understand the notion of preserving forestry and whatnot in the town of Kingston, but it does come back to, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm just tired of the pet projects and whatnot, trying to muscle and utilize government control to essentially devalue someone else's property. I support the, the article because again, we're just getting to the point where we're literally using government forces to manipulate and muscle over other people's properties. It's just not appropriate, so, thank you.
Yes?
Eric Crone, 43, Longwood Circle. Speaking as the chairman of the Elementary School Committee and the vice chair of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. And I've said this before at prior town meetings. Remember, funding for education, the expenses are going up every year. We have more and more students who are coming into our schools. We've had a dip, but there's a lot of development. I just spoke with our elementary and intermediate principals yesterday, and our enrollment is actually going up. So the costs are gonna continue to go up. And as I mentioned before, one of the reasons that Silver Lake assessment went up was because the state said that we can afford to pay more. So our ability to pay supposedly went up. We have higher enrollment. That's gonna continue. We need more funding from not just residential. So remember, and I've said this at other town meetings, a house, somebody moves in, they buy a house, they have three kids, their cost to the town is higher than the taxes they're paying. So this commercial project would bring in the revenues without bringing in kids to the school or other services. So I'm supporting this project because we really need to look at non-residential revenue for the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel wants to clarify something.
So, Mr. Bouchard, to your question, I asked the 40B experts in my office, and they informed me that a title issue cannot be waived for a 40B project. So if the town were to deny a 40B project based on a restrictive covenant easement restriction, the Housing Appeals Committee couldn't overturn that. They can't adjust any title restrictions to the extent it helps.
I've heard both sides of this debate. There was a motion to move the question. I'm gonna entertain that motion right now. I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion's moved. We're now gonna vote the motion. This is a two-thirds majority vote. It's been approved by the, supported by the Board of Selectmen. Is it four zero or five zero? Five zero. And approved by the Finance Committee, five zero. All in favor of Article 20 granting an easement, say aye. All those opposed? You try tricking me with your voices. I'm gonna count, I'm gonna count it. Mr. Colvin, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Bazla, they can't trick you. If you're in favor of granting an easement for Article 20, please take out your blue card, hold it up so it can be counted. Mr. Clark, are you somewhere? Did you? Yep. Please. Twenty-four and fifty? Twenty-one. Thirteen. All those opposed, take out your blue cards, raise it up. Mr. Colvin? Bazla, twenty? Armstrong? I'm gonna do math. Fifty-eight to fifty-four, the motion does not pass. Now, we took that out of order. Let's stick around and finish this meeting. We're moving at a good pace, please. Moving to Article fifteen. Welcome back.
Please stay. Only one person should be walking out the door, the other one has a birthday party. So I move that the sum of $500,000 be appropriated to the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund for partial costs associated with the generation of electricity under the town's power purchase. Okay, I'm usually very loud. That the sum of $500,000 be appropriated to the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund for partial costs associated with the generation of electricity under the town's power purchase agreements to be expended pursuant of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, half, one half, by the Board of Selectmen. And to meet such appropriation, the sum of $500,000 to come from the energy metering tariffs with any funds remaining to be transferred pursuant to the authority granted by the enabling legislation.
I haven't seconded it. I'll open it up to debate. Would you like to be heard further?
So this description is, this article funds the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund for appropriations from ever-source reimbursements received for fiscal year 2021. The Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund pays the wind in solar developers based on the town's power purchasing agreements, PPAs, with the developers. Historically, this budget has been funded by the KWI wind turbine. However, that turbine is no longer functioning or contributing to this fund. This summer, work will begin to construct a solar field on the town's capital landfill. Once completed, that project will contribute to the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund budget.
Daniel Harlow, 31, Howland's Lane. I'm not asking for a motion or anything like right at this moment. I just had a question about going forward. Is there, my understanding is that this is included in the capacity, the levy capacity within the town? And, because I think that was one of the issues with the KWI turbine that had been running previously. My question is this, is there any way to get this taken off that and do an underwrite essentially so that it's taken out of the levy capacity of the town so that it ultimately will benefit the taxpayers in terms of taxes?
Do you want her to, do you have that, or do you want her to address it? Do you want to address it, or do you want, yeah?
No, I'll have Mary address it, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
So, Dan, this is an enterprise fund, and this does not affect our operating budget nor our tax levy in any way. An enterprise fund is established to generate revenue to support its to support its, uh, to support the operations of a business. So the revenue that's generated in this enterprise fund is then used for the expenditures of this fund. There's no tax levy implication through the operation of this enterprise fund. KWI and the solar project will not affect the tax levy at all. The, uh, you are talking specifically about the three turbines that are the no fossil fuels turbines. That's the non-town net metering, which we voted earlier this morning. That is currently in our operating budget. However, if you remember, we also did at a previous town meeting pass a special legislation request to be passed by the state legislature that would allow us to do just that. It has always been problematic that non-town net metering has been part of our operating budget. It's not a town department. It's not something we can control. So we have specifically created and submitted special legislation, a special act, and it is currently working its way through the legislature. Once that passes, then we will be able to remove that non-town net metering from our budget going forward. I did reach out to Kathy Lanatras a, a couple of times as recently as last week, and that is, the act has still not been passed. And it's still working its way through the process. So we're hopeful that that will happen at some point, and we'll be able to take that out of the budget. But this particular one, Article Fifteen, has no impact on our operating budget.
Okay. I, I was just confused by the two, so I was trying to get some clarification. Thank you. That's it.
Any further debate? This has, Board of Selectmen, there's... Favorable Board of Selectmen, favorable Finance Committee, both five-zero. And it is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto motion seventeen. Any member?
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws by amending Section six-point-six of the zoning bylaw as printed in the warrant. Alright, so, um, there's a description in the additional town meeting documents here that really lays this out well for you, but, um, essentially there, we're trying to amend the bylaw to allow for two billboards to be placed in very specific locations. Keeping in mind, this is a revenue generator for the town, and it is very likely that if we don't do this and accept this to happen, it will likely happen just up the road in another town or potentially on private property. So it could generate up to a hundred and ninety thousand in revenue.
Uh, open up debate. I, I have a question from the, uh, Planning Board. Is there someone here? Tommy Bouchard?
Yes?
Is there a Planning Board report? And if not, is there? There is? Yes. I, I got him. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is there a Planning Board report?
I'm, I think I'm the only one here.
Is there a report, or is there a, are you recommending?
Oh, was there a vote? I believe not. Rob, are you up there somewhere?
But, uh, the twenty-one days has expired, so, uh, one does not need it at this point.
Thank you. Any other debate? Hold on, mic.
Eight, if you're, now, now, ma'am. Under Chapter Forty-A, if you're amending a zoning bylaw, there needs to be a Planning Board report or alternatively, twenty-one days must pass after the Planning Board's public hearing. So, so Rob Downey had indicated that more than twenty-one days have passed. So it's appropriately before the board, I mean, before the town meeting, rather.
This is a third... This is a two-thirds majority vote, uh, and it is Board of Selectmen, five-zero, Finance Committee, five-zero, Planning Board, four-zero. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Two-thirds majority vote passes unanimously. Eighteen's passed. So we're on to, um, the last one. Yes. Eight, eighteen's not being heard. Can you turn the mics on, please?
If there's no motion made, it's automatically passed over. If, if the moderator prefers, he can move to pass over.
I move that it be passed over. All, all in favor of being passed over, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Motion's passed over. By majority vote. Now, on to, uh, number nineteen. Yes, sir.
Move that the town accept Galvin Road and Marion Drive as a public way and to authorize the selectmen to accept or take via eminent domain a suitable fee for, or easement in said way as presented in the warrant.
Would you like to be heard on your motion? Seven seconds. Yes?
Well, the purpose of taking these two roads is to get the easements for the, um, waterline extension and the sewer main extensions. Without the, um, without the taking of the roads, it would cost the town roughly five-hundred thousand dollars, if not possibly more. By taking the roads, the MBTA will be giving the town two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for roadway improvements, uh, which the Highway Department has deemed that that would be adequate to make any necessary repairs.
Is anyone else, oh, here we go. He's moving faster. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, Thirty-one Howland's Lane. Um, do we? So I, I believe you just said it, we believe it would be necessary, uh, we believe two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars would be adequate to repair those roads. Do, do we know for sure, or is this just, again, just kind of like conjecture?
Paul wants to speak to that.
Say, sorry.
Uh, I would defer to the Highway Department for that.
Oh.
Yes.
Always, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Fifty-five South Street, also a water commissioner. Earlier today, we approved the water commissioner's budget. And as part of that, we also approved money to run or extend the high-pressure water main down, um, Galvin Boulevard, or whatever it's called. Anyway, Marion Drive, I'm sorry. And understand that we voted the first part, but absent the second part, we really can't do the first part. We really do need to own the road, and we've had this odorous cost that we've, that we've been assessed on the Water Department over the years for the sleeve that goes under the railroad. And this will help us with that problem, so I urge you to approve it.
Thank you. Seeing no further debate, I will, up, hold on.
Deborah McLean, sixteen Longview Drive. Just for clarification, it looks like the original estimate to upgrade the roads to get them to the state's or the city's town standards was approximately nine-hundred thousand dollars. And now, the second time, there was an estimate made, it was about two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. I'm wondering what the difference is.
See if you can keep this to one word.
Yes, I was asked about, uh, six months ago to, uh, come up with a wish list for that road. I would love to see brand-new granite curvins. I'd love to see all-new drainage. I'd love to see, you know, quite an extensive amount of work to be done. But then it has to be done by, with, with requirements by the, the Planning Board. I couldn't ask the MBTA to put in the granite sidewalks. Sidewalks are already there. I couldn't ask for doing drainage, because the drainage is only twenty-plus years old. So in keeping with the Planning Board's, uh, rules and regulations for the acceptance of streets, I came up with a proposal for the two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. It does, the roads are gonna be fine when everybody's done with them, trust me. I've been the Highway Superintendent for twenty years. I wish I could get the nine-hundred thousand and put new granite curb in up there, but we couldn't. So these roads will be, if we choose to accept them, and after the, after the Water Department and the Waste Water Department goes through them, the roads will meet all standards under the Planning Board rules and regulations.
Seeing no further debate? This was Board of Selectmen, five-zero, Planning Board, five-zero. This is a two-thirds, uh, vote. So, all those in favor of approving the street acceptance, Article nineteen, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Motion carries with limited opposition. Bye-bye. Mo- motion, motion allowed. We need a vote for that? Go ahead. Do I need a vote? Can we vote this motion to adjourn? All in favor of adjournance, Sunday? Say aye. Motion allowed. Thank you so much to everybody for coming out today.